Good evening. I will call to order the January 8th meeting of the Gorham School Committee. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Mia De Sanctis.
Here.
Michelle Littlefield.
Here.
Stuart McAllister.
Here.
Sarah Perkins.
Here.
Eric Thistle.
Here.
Jennifer Whitehead.
Here.
Nicole Yeo Fisher.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 1.3, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting of December 11th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 11th, 2024, as presented.
Second? Motion by Nicole, second by Michelle. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. 2.0 Administrative Reports. There are no administrative reports for this meeting because of the holiday break. So we'll move along to 2.2, Program Review: Lollipop Moments Circle Up Books Presentation.
Good evening. It is such a pleasure to be here, representing Village School. I'm Jody, the principal. And I have the pleasure of introducing representatives from our student leadership team, the ambassadors, who is mentored and led by Stacy Sawyer. So, thank you very much, Stacy. And on behalf of all of Village School staff and our 5th grade teachers here, I would like to say that you're in for a treat tonight. So, at Village School, we have a framework that we've been working under for the last few years called Building Assets, Reducing Risk, which is, we refer to it as BAR. And through BAR, we have U-Times that are done in all of the classrooms once a week. And they are lessons that are, or really conversations, that are really geared around building relationships with students and students, teachers, teachers and teachers and students. And it really, I asked a student today, "How would you describe the U-Times?" And she did say to me, "It's really about building trust with each other and building relationships with my classmates." And so, tonight, we are going to go through a U-Time with all of you. And then, I won't say much about this, because our students will explain this lovely, but also, they work at, without, within the whole school, on a whole school project called the Circle Up Books, and they will talk about that. And so, it is a great pleasure that I introduce them tonight. We are going to start with a video to tee us up for our U-Time. And this is something that is used in the 5th grade class, and I hope you all can hear it. Just a couple of minutes.
How many of you guys have a lollipop moment? A moment where someone said something or did something that you feel fundamentally made your life better? All right. How many of you have told that person they did it? See, why not? We celebrate birthdays where all you have to do is not die for 365 days. And yet, we let people who have made our lives better walk around without knowing it. And every single one of you, every single one of you has been the catalyst for a lollipop moment. You have made someone's life better by something that you said or that you did. And if you think you haven't, think about all the hands that didn't go back up when I asked that question. You're just one of the people who hasn't been told. But it is so scary to think of ourselves as that powerful. It can be frightening to think that we can matter that much to other people. Because as long as we make leadership something bigger than us, as long as we keep leadership something beyond us, as long as we make it about changing the world, we give ourselves an excuse not to expect it every day from ourselves and from each other. Mary Ann Williamson said, "Our greatest fear is not that we are inadequate. Our greatest fear is that we are powerful beyond measure. It is our light and not our darkness that frightens us." And my call to action today is that we need to get over that. We need to get over our fear of how extraordinarily powerful we can be in each other's lives. We need to get over it so we can move beyond it. And our little brothers and our little sisters, and one day our kids, or our kids right now, can watch us start to value the impact we can have on each other's lives more than money and power and titles and influence. We need to redefine leadership as being about lollipop moments. How many of them we create? How many of them we acknowledge? How many of them we pay forward? And how many of them we say thank you for? Because we've made leadership about changing the world, and there is no world. There's only 6 billion understandings of it. And if you change one person's understanding of it, one person's understanding of what they're capable of, one person's understanding of how much people care about them, one person's understanding of how powerful and agent for change they can be in this world, you change the whole thing. And if we can change, understand leadership like that, I think if we can redefine leadership like that, I think we can change everything. And it's a simple idea, but I don't think it's a small one. And I want to thank you all so much for letting me share it with you today.
(Coughs) Okay. Ms. Yeo Fisher, we know you volunteer at the Backpack Program and have also coached in Gorham. We appreciate your compassion and time. Ms. De Sanctis, you've proved students and staff with their tools, and they need to be successful. And you also make delicious treats at Sullivan House Bakery. Ms. Littlefield, thank you for volunteering in Gorham Schools and giving your time in so many ways to Gorham Students. Mr. McAllister, we know you have over seven years of service as a member of the school committee. A lot of students have benefited because of your service. Mr. Thistle, thank you for running for school committee this year. We are lucky to have people willing to serve our school and town. Ms. Whitehead, in addition to serving on the school committee, we know you have helped bring the civil rights team to Gorham Elementary Schools, and many are still active. Ms. Perkins, you also have many years of service. We appreciate your extra work as a school committee chairperson. Mr. Donahue, we are happy you care about kids and let our snow days be fun days. Ms. Warren, we appreciate you for sharing all of your knowledge in Gorham's and Gorham Schools. You are such an important member to our schools. Ms. Amelia O'Laaru, thank you for modeling leadership by being on the school council as a student and for sharing your talent as part of the Gorham High School theory. Young kids look up to high schooler students. Now, we challenge you, will you connect with someone who has positive impact to your life and let them know how they made you feel? I bet you will.
Hi, my name is Maeve, and we are all 5th grade student ambassadors. We're here today to share the Circle Up Project at Village. We thought it would be fun to interview people in our school community. And our job was to interview Mrs. Baker, our school clinical counselor, and Mrs. McAllister, our school librarian, who worked together and renewed this project last year. Let me share Mrs. Baker's thoughts. First, she told us Circle Up Reading started three or four years ago. She explained that she and the grateful social worker got together to provide books that focused around diversity, equality, and inclusion. We also wanted teachers to have access to resources and activities for each story. The thought was to have a read aloud and discussion in a circle with all students to provide space for each to share their voice and for others to hear from one another. And we wanted all teachers to have access to books. We wanted it to provide many books with follow-up questions related to the story. I know that the questions help us think more about important points in each book. I like talking with Mrs. Baker. She gave us a really good history on why we have Circle Up.
Hi, my name is Deacon, and I'm happy to share Mrs. McAllister's thoughts. When Mrs. McAllister joined Village School, she began to work together with Mrs. Baker on this project. She has such a love and knowledge of books. The questions we asked, why or how did Circle Up Reading start and why is it important? Or how does it help Mrs. McAllister? They said that the books are chosen to match the theme of the month. She agrees that they support diversity, equality, and inclusion, also our district code of conduct. She also believes it helps all students feel like they belong. Mrs. McAllister added that Circle Up leads to restorative practices, which gives each student a voice and a feeling of being seen. We learned a lot by interviewing Mrs. McAllister and Miss Baker and Mrs. McAllister.
Hi, I'm Vivian, and this is Abby. We are lucky enough to interview students from all the grades. The first question we asked was, "Do you have any idea why it's important to read Circle Up books?" And boy, did these kids have answers. 4th grader Remy told me she thinks it's important to read Circle Up books so people know how to use the code of conduct. Delia added, "Never leave anyone out," and that's important for all of us to remember. Jamie wanted us to know that he thought it teaches you how to be kind to each other. And 1st grader Emerson replied, "Take courage to get help from an adult and not bullying." When I asked our kids what their favorite part about Circle Up books, I heard some great things, like 5th grader Ray, who said, "Reading to the littles is my favorite part," and her favorite book is A Bike Like Sergio's. She also thinks it's important to learn from the books we read. Ethan, another 5th grader, added, "Listening to the books is his favorite part, especially the book Weird. It teaches us to learn from your mistakes." When we asked for my youngest student, what their favorite books was out of three, we read SoFi. 2nd grader Blake's favorite book is Weird, because it tells us to be kind to everyone, and it's okay to be weird. A kindergarten named Deanna liked both Keep on the Monk and Weird. She really likes how both those stories go, especially how the bully from Weird stopped using the word weird. Abby and I had so much fun, we kept finding new kids to entertain.
I am Abby Espao, and I was so excited to be chosen to interview kids from Village School about Circle Up books. Circle Up books are books that our whole school reads once a month. These books teach us to be our very best selves. I think Circle Up books are important because they help kids feel like they belong. I love the responses I got from the kids at our school. Viv and I took our job seriously, and the kids did too. Let me tell you what a few kids shared. Evy said, "I think Circle Up books are important because they teach us about kindness, respect, and not to judge." Carl and Knox both agree that Circle Up books teach us about kindness, and they also both like how our whole school reads them. Joey, a 4th grader, told us he thinks Circle Up books are important because they teach us about kindness and how to help others. He also likes Circle Up books because they help kids find themselves and teach us how to become more independent. Julia, who is one of our 3rd graders, shared that Circle Up books are important because they teach us about integrity. She likes how our whole school reads them, and she could talk to anyone about the book we're reading that month. Our younger students had great answers, too. 2nd grader Busy said she liked how all classes read the same book each month. She also said she liked Keep on the Monk, We At You Men's Thanksgiving Story the best. 1st grader Roji shared that Circle Up books are important because they teach us about kindness. She also likes the plots and themes. Kindergarten Ellie really likes how they teach us about respect and kindness. Her favorite book is Weird, because the book taught her how she can help others. I love how Circle Up books teach us valuable lessons. For me, these books teach us how our voice can change the world, and there's a difference between can and won't.
Hi, my name is Roman, and this is Grace. Our job was to interview Ms. Mezzanotti and Ms. Futter, the principal and vice principal at Village School. Let me tell you about Mrs. Futter's thinking around Circle Up. When I asked her why she liked the Circle Up Project, she shared a lot. First, she said the Circle Up Project is a fun way to learn, and it's engaging. It's a good way to learn through different stories. So far, we've learned about the code of conduct, diversity, and gratitude. We also learned about resilience and growth mindset. Then I asked Ms. Futter about the code of conduct and why it's important. She said, "The code of conduct is important because it gives our school guidance on appropriate behavior. It also gives us a collective understanding on how to work together and make our school a safe place." I like that, too. We have to work together to make our school a great place to learn. I really enjoy this project. Thank you for letting me present.
Hi, I'm Grace, and I love being ambassador. I also love the Circle Up Project. I'm going to share the things that Ms. Mezzanotti shared with us. I asked her, "What is your favorite part about Circle Up?" She responded with, "I love the Circle Up Project, because I think it gives a deeper conversation with the characters and teaches a lesson in almost every Circle Up book." Then I asked her what she thought was important about the code of conduct. Ms. Mezzanotti responded, "I think it is important to guide us as a town, staff, and students. It all forms us into something like a big happy family." I agree. It's an opportunity for us to be kind to each other. I love my school. The teachers are nice. I feel safe. The kids feel safe, and we all share things in common. We want to thank you for listening to our present about Circle Up tonight. We also want to thank everybody in our community for supporting our Readathon. That is how we make sure that, sure, every classroom library receives their own copy. We have a copy for the February Circle Up Book for each member of the school committee. We would like to invite you to come to Village on Tuesday, February 4th, to read to us during our Readathon.
Thank you. Take off. Thank you. This was amazing. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for the presenters? Go ahead.
I have a comment for you guys, because I remember being in 5th grade and having the privilege of being a student ambassador, and I remember being so important and powerful in my school and seeing how bright each and every single one of you is. I just want to say that the work you are doing right now is so powerful and has so much impact for our community, and I hope that each and every one of you continues to pave the way for the future generations of Gorham. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Anyone else? We get to clap because it's for the kids. Normally, we're not allowed to clap, so, but for the kids, definitely. Anyone else have anything to share? Michelle?
I just want to say thank you so much. I have not felt this good in a long time. It was so nice that, what you coordinated for all of us. And I am blown away with how well you all just presented. That was amazing. I don't even think I can speak that well in public, so, great job.
Jen?
I also just want to say thank you so much. You definitely not only made my night, but just made my month. And I'll just tell you, sometimes it is hard to come to meetings at night when we could be with our families. But when I come and see amazing students like you and see the work that we're doing, it just makes everything worth it. And so, I thank you so much for coming tonight and making me feel like that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. The recording should be on GoCat for parents in a couple of days. And you are all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but don't feel like you have to. One more round of applause. All right. We'll move on now to 2.3, Program Review: Main Care Billing Update. Seriously? Like, how do I follow that? This was just mean, and I don't even get applause afterwards. Like, what? That was amazing, you guys. That was, you were so articulate, and I will not be nearly half a so. Just crazy. That was awesome. And I'm sitting there going, "This is just mean, you guys. This is mean." It's Heather. It's Heather that's going to pay for that. Good. Well, good evening. So, I am Kathy Hillman, Director of Special Services. Dr. Perry asked me to come and give a very brief update on where we at with main care billing, that we were requested to begin to do at this point, at some point this year. So, she asked me to kind of give a little bit of a where we were, where we are, and where we're going. And so, again, it'll be brief. Some of this you guys have heard already a little bit. So, before 2010, Gorham School District used to bill for main care. We were bringing in approximately $600,000 a year to do that in revenue. That is before the costs associated. We had a full-time social worker that was overseeing it. We had a full-time secretary. We had a billing system that was a bit costly. And then, there was the time and effort of the staff to do those things. Around 2010, the feds were auditing main school districts, and were finding that there was some paperwork that was not correct. It was guidance that was given to those schools by DHHS and the MDOE. But as the schools worked together to kind of figure out what was going on, we realized that we all had different things happening. It hadn't been given different answers. We had the emails and the proof to show we were following what was told, but it didn't matter. The feds don't care about that. They basically told many school districts, "Pay us back." So, some schools, one nearby district about our size, we had to pay $120,000. Another nearby district, $336,000. Portland was more than half a million. So, these districts were able to show with, despite the guidance, it didn't matter. So, what did Gorham do? Along with many other districts, we pulled back. We didn't want to have that risk to our district. The school board at that time and the superintendent said, "Everybody, let's take a step back, and we need to see what's going on." So, we, along with many districts, really only looked at Sections 28, 65, and 109, speech services, OT, PT, because those are much easier. The guidance was much clearer on the medical necessity. And so, most districts, even to this day, that's all they're billing right now. So, we were really waiting to see what issues would get fixed, so that we could maybe look back into going into the Section 65, which is much more the behavioral health kind of We kept watching, and we kept watching, and we kept watching. And as a, I was on the Board of MadSec at that time for a while there, and we were really very clear in what we needed, what we were hoping for, and really weren't getting anything back that we felt secure in. So, after, in 2014, when I became director, we were able to look at what the cost of what we were bringing in based on that. And after paying for all the things in order to do the billing system, it was $8,000. And it did not seem at that time like it was worth it for our therapists to have to put in that time that was being taken away from working with students. And it was still a risk at that point. So, it was decided by the school board we would stop billing main care at that time. So, now, DHHS since then has created, they created a liaison between the Department of Education and DHHS, really focusing on main care billing in schools. It is very different than it is for medical areas. So, there was a lot of work that has gone on around being able to use IEPs as they are written, or we actually end up having to change the outlook of the IEP in order to meet DHHS's requirements. But because, and I think there was definitely a lot of work. I don't know that necessarily it was enough that I was, as we years went on, and I'm still watching the districts that are billing, we're not, we don't really still feel secure in that piece. But special ed costs continue to rise. Our population continues to rise. The needs are getting more hot, are getting higher. And so, superintendent requested that we begin to bill main care at this point to help offset those costs, and it makes complete sense. So, what we've done so far this year, we hired a billing specialist, Dawn Davis. She has now been spending her fall, we hired her in mid-October. She's been learning about main care billing, taking some trainings, working with our online system that we have, Acuity, taking trainings with them, talking with DHHS, reaching out, finding out about those pieces, helping Nicole Poole, my assistant director, and I work with our staff in order to prepare to bill, working on doing the trainings with them, getting certifications into the system, all kinds of things. One of the things that held us up a little bit, we were hoping to actually start, maybe begin billing in December, there was an IRS number that nobody had that was given back in the 50s or 60s, and who has that letter anymore? And it was something new, so we had to really work with IRS. Well, working with IRS takes weeks to get a letter. And so, we, the things like that are what held us out a little bit more. But we have all those pieces. Acuity is ready to go. And so, before the break, we sent out consents to all our families, and those consents are starting to come in, so we have students now that we are getting ready to bill for. So, again, working with this, we're going to be billing for speech, for OT, and for physical therapy, to, and they're learning that new billing system as we speak. We'll be working on to begin billing probably in the very beginning of February. So, where we're going, we're going to continue to solidify how we're using the billing system, making sure we're doing everything correctly, doing our own audits throughout, continue to work with our staff. It is working a lot with them on trying to find how to best fit in the time to do that paperwork around their students. It sounds easy, and I let them know that. I know I'm telling you, have this open, and as you're working with students, be putting those things in, easier said than done, especially for many of the students who need all the attention in the world and a lot of hands-on and a lot of walking back and forth to classrooms. Their time is really minimal on what they have for their own free time to be able to do that. So, we're going to be working with them to look for that time and helping find out where all those efficiencies can come in to play for them. We are going to begin to look at the training, the time and expense for training and texts in some of our Higher Needs Programs, on my Functional Life Skills Programs and my behavior programs, to get them a Behavioral Health Professional Certification. You need that BHP certification in order to bill for Section 65. So, and it's a 35-hour training, as well as an additional CPR and first aid course that has to happen. So, that's a lot of time. So, we're really going to be looking about how can we spread that out through the year to help get these in place, so that we can then start looking at Section 65, maybe at the end of the next school year, but probably the following school year is what we'd be preparing for. And then, we're going to be exploring other possibilities of billing practices. Right now, main care is looking to expand those practices, as many other states have done. There's a lot of things that can happen through, a lot of the things that nurses are doing, I guess, is going to be made available to bill for. It is not yet, though. Those rules are changing. And there's definitely even Section 504 students, there might be some things that we're doing with them that we'll be able to bill for. So, we'll be, over the years, expanding into that. We're not there yet, and the rules still haven't even changed, but it's coming. And that is all I got for you. That is where we are. Any questions? Questions? Jen?
Is there a plan, like, maybe down the line, billing for other things as well? Or are you just kind of sticking with those?
We're, so, we're going to be sticking with these three things for this school year and really making sure we're doing it correctly next school year. And then, we'll be preparing for that section, more that behavioral kind of health piece in my Higher Needs Programs next, through next year. So, it'll be a lot of preparation. It's a, it's a heavy feel for our therapists. It'll be even a heavier feel for my teachers to have to put this into place, because that's taking away from their planning, time with kids, when they're having to do the paperwork. And there is a fear out there of doing it wrong and then having to come to you guys to say, "Hey, we owe money," right? That is a fear out there in special ed land. And quite honestly, you know, there, that was, that was some, that was a draw for people to come here and work in special education, because we weren't billing. So, it's something that we're trying to ease everybody into and making sure that we're giving them the supports they need and taking the baby steps to move forward, so that we can make sure everybody's doing it correctly, but also kind of ease their anxieties around that. Any other questions? Michelle?
I just, I'm curious, kind of, it's timely going into many budget conversations, but just, is there anything in particular that you would call out that we can do to support you, you know, so that it kind of mitigates that risk? Or any resources that you think are kind of at the top of your list that you would advocate for?
Yeah. So, probably about eight years ago, with the last special education state director, I had been advocating for, I would really, they really, they want us, they want districts to bill. They want to bring the federal money into the, into the state of Maine. And I was really advocating for the fact that districts were worried, there was a risk. Could the DOE mitigate that risk by having almost an insurance plan for us? Could there be a pot of money that's set aside for when a district makes an error? That it's covered by the DOE? Oops, you made an error. If I do that error again, that's on me, right? Or on us, not really me. So, then, could that be helpful and help districts feel like they can go forward and take that risk? They were really interested in that, but then she retired. And so, with the, with this new state director, we're hoping to, we've talked about it. I think there is an interest there. And I have talked with some of our representatives across the state around, is this something that could be pursued and maybe helps to bring other districts into play and help towns kind of ease that burden and some of those fears? So, we would like to be able to continue considering that. So, if you're talking to some officials, that would be great. If that's a possibility, yeah. Any other questions? Comments? No? Okay. Well, I know you can't clap for me, but, okay. Thank you. We're clapping in our head. Thank you very much. Moving on to 3.0 Communications, 3.1 Public Comment. Is there any member of the public wishing to make comment?
Is there any member of the public wishing to make comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to 3.2 Student School Committee Member.
Hi, everyone. So starting off, we have midterms coming up the week of January 20th. So a lot of studying coming up for us high schoolers. And then we have the yearly musical, Little Shop of Horrors, which will be opening the weekend of January 31st through February 9th. And you can purchase tickets ahead of time on the GHS website to secure your seat. And then we have Gorham Athletics, which is holding a food drive to collect needed items for the Gorham Backpack Program. And then another annual donation drive is being held by Girl Up for the Florence House from January 2nd through February 14th. And then a really interesting travel opportunity for high school students who are interested in world languages and travel. We have two of our world language teachers taking students to Quebec City from June 20th to the 23rd. And this is an amazing opportunity for students to expand their language proficiency, as well as take part in cultural immersion. And overall, I would highly recommend. I was just there for Thanksgiving break, and I loved it. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much. We'll move on to 3.3 Superintendent Communications. Hello.
Well, hey. So Superintendent Perry is currently in Washington DC right now at an AAS A Executive Committee event. So I'm here to share her report on her behalf. And the first piece in the report is Governor Mills has created a commission to study school capital construction needs across our state and to develop a report from that, outlining the suggestions on how we might meet all of those tremendous, tremendous needs that currently exist across our state. So good news is that our very own Hollis Cobb is on that commission, and we're eager to see what comes out of all that work that they're putting in. Certainly, hopefully it will have a positive impact on the capital building needs that we have here in Gorham. Next, the individual budget meetings with principals and program directors are moving right along very nicely. They actually should be all wrapping up by the week, by, well, next week, by January 17th. Then we'll be able to move forward with a full view of all the proposals that exist. The super intense guess is that it will take, essentially, everything that we have will be above that 5.25% overall increase threshold. And we'll definitely be looking at a way to kind of pare that down in some way when we bring something forward to the school committee to hit the 5.25 that we requested. So remember that initial budget will be shared with school committee members digitally at the February regular meeting. And then we will spend the month of March going through all those meetings and making adjustments with the anticipated school committee proposed FY '26 budget approval vote going on at early April. Next, it looks like we'll be able to add 26 more public pre-K slots for the coming school year, which is very exciting, with new partnerships with Cradle Inn, 10 slots there, and Imagination Station with 16 slots. So this will bring our total services up to 138 public pre-K slots for the '25, '26 school year. And we'll be completing applications and onboarding for our new partners later in the spring. And then the final piece is the Alternative Education Vision Committee is wrapping up its work later this month, and will be preparing to share the vision document with the school committee at the February workshop meeting.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Moving on to 3.4 School Committee Communications. I'm going to start right in the middle with Stuart.
Thank you. So I do want to start with two items. I thank the New Year's Gorham Committee. They put on a great event for New Year's. The high school robotics team served food in the high school cafeteras, they usually do, and they did really well. So thank you to everybody who supported that event and who supported the high school robotics team. Second item I have, one of the most important things, I feel, for a school committee member is to learn about topics being presented, educate themselves on the decisions they're making, and being present at meetings to participate and contribute. Due to changes in my role and time commitments required for me at work, I don't feel that I'm able to be an effective member of this committee. So with regret at the conclusion of this meeting, I will be resigning my position on the Gorham School Committee. Our students, staff, and community deserve someone who can commit to the time required to serve. With budget season beginning next month, teacher negotiations beginning this month, amongst all the other important tasks that come before the school committee, it's simply not fair for me to hold a seat and deny our community appropriate representation. I want to thank the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and rest of the admin team for the dedication and professionalism. We have an amazing leadership team here in Gorham that will stop at nothing to make sure our students have the best education in the safest environment. Thank you to every teacher and staff members who helped the student find their way in our schools. During my time on this committee, I've been fortunate to witness the amazing care and dedication that is provided to our students. Thank you to everyone who has invited me to their class, school, or classroom to proudly display the achievements of their staff and students. Thank you also to the members of this committee and previous committees for keeping all of those things at the forefront when making decisions and making sure that we provide the best for our students. I will forever appreciate the hard work that goes into every aspect of making sure that our schools run smoothly and safely and look forward to finding new ways to support the efforts of the school committee in the Gorham School Department.
Thank you, Stuart. Okay, Jen, we'll swing around to you.
Okay. Well, I was on the verge of crying earlier today with a lollipop moment, so I'm going to try to hold it in. I just want to extend my heartfelt thanks for you for your many years, seven?
Eight.
Eight. Eight years of dedicated service on the Gorham School Committee and the multiple subcommittees. And I mean, it's extensive what you've done. Your commitment to our schools and your ability to lead with respect and open-mindedness have left a lasting impact on me and I think on our community. Your willingness to listen to all sides has set a powerful example of thoughtful leadership. I'll tell a little story that I know I've said before, but I think it's worth repeating. This was a lollipop moment for me. When I started at the school committee, my first year, some of you may remember, I struggled quite a bit, feeling like I wasn't heard, that I wasn't being respected. And I will never forget a meeting when Stuart really stuck up for me, and I felt so heard and respected, and it really turned things around. And your record-breaking dedication to policies. I don't think anyone's going to beat 50 policies in one year ever again. You're just nothing short of extraordinary. Your knowledge and expertise have been invaluable, and your presence on the committee will be deeply missed. Thank you for your tireless work and for putting Gorham students and families first. We're so grateful for all you've done to strengthen our schools and our community. Wishing you all the best and obviously seeing you around in robotics, but we'll miss you here.
Thank you.
Mia?
Well, our time together has been brief, but I will say that even before I joined the committee, I looked up to you, respected you as a member. We've known each other quite a long time as you were a parent when I was at Village School. I'd like to say how much I've learned from you, even our short time together. One thing that really stands out to me with you is that when you speak, people listen. When you speak, you've got something to say, and it's worth being heard. So I will miss that. I wish you well. I respect your decision. It's going to be hard shoes to fill, but I wish you well.
Thank you.
Eric?
Well, Stuart, we just met very recently, but I appreciate your willingness and graciousness to volunteer to be the mentor. It hasn't quite come to fruition, but I did really appreciate you volunteering to take on that responsibility. And I look forward to continuing to interact with you and the community.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Yes, I'll just echo the sentiments. I think you ladies over there said it very well. I definitely, you know, Stuart, I've learned a ton from you in this short time, watching you even handle some of the challenges that you all went through before. I know I joined the Board. I just was always impressed with the way that you handled yourself in meetings, the questions you asked, the way that you communicate, how you care about our schools and our students, our teachers. It just shows in the way that you make decisions how thoughtful you are. And I just think that Gorham is hugely indebted to you for what you've given for the last eight years. So thank you.
All right, Stuart, you're almost there. Nicole?
Thank you, Stuart, for being a great mentor to me last year. It is a nerve-wracking first year to learn all of the things. And I, again, just like Michelle said, echo everything that has been said. I appreciate how objective you can remain in looking and analyzing a situation. And, you know, as Mia said, when you speak, people listen because you carry yourself with a great deal of respect. This is not an easy position to take, and I know you've taken some hits sometimes. And you've done it very gracefully and in a very classy way with the community in mind, with the students in mind, with our staff in mind. And I will also forever be grateful for your tutelage around how to read a budget book because the way you presented it is going to last with me for a long time. So thank you for everything that you've done for our community.
Thank you.
So I am going to miss knowing that any question I had on parliamentary procedure, strategic thinking, taking a step back and looking at the big picture, that I could call you and get a clear, thoughtful answer. You ask amazing questions. I miss that already. I miss watching you cross-stitch before meetings started. I feel like the crafty side was something that you and I shared. You finally finished your 2020 project. You have served on every committee. You have chaired every committee. You have chaired the total committee vice chair. There isn't a position I don't think that you haven't held. So thank you for your impact, and come back anytime. We have a very, very small token of our appreciation, but it really can't express our thanks. So thank you, Stuart. Standing ovation. Okay. Cleansing breath, and we will move on to 4.0 School Committee, Standing and Special Committees, 4.1 Finance and Facilities. Michelle?
Yes, we have not actually met since our last meeting due to the holidays. And our next meeting is scheduled for January 22nd at 6:00 PM at the GMS Library.
Mia, Policy Committee?
Also, the Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting due to the holiday break. And we are scheduled also for the 22nd at 6:00 PM at the GMS Library.
There's a theme here. 4.3 Personnel Committee. Michelle?
Yes, continuing the theme, we've not met since the last meeting, but we do have some proposed goals to share later in the agenda. And our next meeting will be held January 30th at 3:30 PM in the upstairs conference room at Central Office.
4.4 Vocational Education. Jen?
Yeah, rounding it out, we have not met since the last meeting. The next meeting will be tomorrow morning at 8:30 AM at PATHS.
Okay. And for our Ad Hoc Committees, Gorham Teaching and Learning. Eric?
So we actually have met since the last meeting.
Good for you.
The day after the last meeting. And the Teaching and Learning Committee or group had a really, I thought, productive meeting on measuring student success. That was sort of the topic that we were discussing. And what was interesting about the way we conducted that meeting was breaking into small groups and having essentially breakout rooms on Zoom to discuss ways in which we individually were able to identify the alignment between our strategic plan and the metrics for success and how those aligned with Gorham's mission and vision as a whole. But also, we talked about ways in which it didn't align and gave ourselves some homework to identify the way in which other districts are doing it, to see if we can better align the strategic plan and our metrics for success with the general vision. So there's work to be done, and our next meeting is January 21st at 3:30 PM by Zoom.
Thank you. Any questions for Eric? Seeing none, moving on to Anti-Racism and Equity Committee. Nicole?
We last met on December 19th. During that meeting, we were able to introduce our new facilitator, Gabriella. We were able to add some additional members to the group. So we spent some time really talking about the reasons why we were on the committee, what we wanted to achieve. And one of the biggest things was really sort of separating out some group work. So we have three different groups that we sort of subgroups that will work as part of the committee. One will be Community Events. One is working, continuing the work on the Equity Toolkit. And the third is looking at Student Voice, so looking a little bit more in-depthly around climate and culture. I think that's the biggest piece is some of that work that Dr. Perry has been doing as she has been working with the students directly around that. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 23rd at 5:30 at the GHS Library.
Any questions for Nicole? Nope, seeing none. Dropout Prevention Committee, Mia?
We have not met since the last meeting, and the next meeting is TBD.
Okay. Alternative Education Vision Committee. Mr. Donahue, Dr. Donahue, excuse me.
Yeah, so just as I mentioned earlier, well, we hadn't met since our last meeting, I should say that first. The draft vision document's coming together really nicely, and it'll be shared with the school committee at the February workshop meeting. And the next meeting is January 29th at 3:30 in the GHS Library.
Fiscal Sustainability Committee. Michelle?
Yes, and the Fiscal Sustainability Committee has not met since the last meeting, but we have a meeting scheduled January 16th at 6:00 PM in the downstairs conference room, so next week.
All right. Moving on to unfinished business, of which there is none. New business, 6.1 Action Is Needed on Communications and Reports. So at this point, we will talk about the soon-to-be open position on the school committee. I'm going to read a couple things out loud just to make sure that it's on record and anybody watching this can have the same information that we do. So upon reviewing the town charter, our path forward with a vacant seat, we need to work to fill the open position within about 30 days, which means that we'll be targeting no later than our regular meeting scheduled for February 12th to take appropriate action to fill the seat. The appointment requires nothing more than a majority vote of the school committee. Once approved, the individual will fill the seat until the next municipal election, which is scheduled for June 2025. In June, there will be an election to fill the open seat for the remainder of the term, which in this case is only through November 2025, at which point there will be the regular election in November to fill two seats that would then be open, which is the remainder of Stuart's term. And then Jen's seat is also up in November. So we're hoping for some hearty souls to come forward who don't mind running for election a couple of times. So at this point, we're going to have a very brief discussion around what are some of the characteristics that we might be hoping for, looking for in someone that we would appoint to fill the seat, at least from now until June? Some examples that I will throw out to start the ball rolling, understanding finance and budgets. We are entering budget season. Communication skills, obviously, there's a lot of speaking involved with this role. And especially anybody with a background in communications, marketing, PR, helping us to get our voice out in the community would be much appreciated. And then someone who has some community knowledge, historical knowledge, anybody that's previously been on the committee who might miss us and want to come on back would certainly be a great asset to the committee. Again, we are hitting our busiest time of year coming up. Anybody have anything else that they want to add to those kind of things? So we had finance budgets, communication, marketing, and then previous experience, or a lot of historic knowledge of the community? Anything else that has?
Just, I think, one thing that I think stands out for me would just be willingness to learn. I don't know how we judge that, but I think even those with experience and things that we thought we knew, we learned that, oh, wow, it's much more complicated than we thought as we get into these seats. So, yeah, I would say openness and willingness to learn.
I'm wondering too, Sarah, if it might be helpful to maybe mention what the next three months might mean for a time commitment, just so that folks are aware of what that looks like, especially going into budget, but what else might be from now until June?
Yeah. So during the month of March, sorry, let me back up. So our regular schedule is the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. We have a regular meeting and a workshop meeting each month. Those both start at 7:00. And then for the month of March, for budgets, we meet every Monday evening for a couple of hours to go through the budget. And those are the major highlights. Depending on this individual, we do also need to consider filling any committee spots that are now open or mentor spots. So that would be part of a conversation with whoever is interested. Did I miss anything there?
No.
Oh, okay, cool. Give me a quiz, geez.
Sorry.
Any other characteristics that we're looking for?
Maybe experience with collective bargaining?
Experience with collective bargaining, okay.
That'd be a bonus.
Yep. All right, well, certainly if there are additional thoughts, reach out. Anybody out there who might be interested, please do reach out. Reach out to myself, my email's on the district website, or to Superintendent Perry directly. And then we are looking for people to express their interest by January 17th. And we will, uh, hope, sorry, trying to read and talk at the same time. We'll be appointing someone either at the January 22nd workshop meeting or the February 12th meeting. All right, moving along. 6.2 Consideration and Action on Draft 2024-25 School Committee Goals. Michelle?
Sure. Okay, so I think I'll just walk through and maybe give an overview of our approach in this document. And I won't read things kind of word for word. I'll assume that you have all kind of done a quick review. You will notice some changes to the structure, both of the template and a few, some changes to our goals. The Personnel Committee really kind of took feedback from our last conversation around our evaluation and kind of reviewing our last year's performance. And I don't think you'll see a lot of substantive changes behind the intent of the goals, but we did reduce our goals down to three so that we could have very kind of targeted and measurable action steps that will show kind of progress against these goals throughout the year. So the first is really focused on communication, that being a strong theme for us. And for folks that may not know, our communication rules as a school committee differ from those of other kind of local bodies, like the Town Council, with the ways that we can communicate as individual members. And so kind of acknowledging that, we really want to focus, I think, have a strong focus on communication to the public. And so you'll see in the action steps under that goal some of the methods that we're looking at to achieve this goal. The second goal is around our learning opportunities. And so one of the things I'll call out here is that you'll see that the diversity, equity, and inclusion item that was previously a fourth goal has been nested under this goal. That was not in any way to kind of reduce its importance or minimize it, but we did have a conversation kind of around when does that goal kind of fold into another goal? And we, you know, kind of continue the focus, not as its own item, but kind of maybe aligned with other areas. And so you'll see that change here. And then the third goal really kind of is geared toward the financial aspects, so fiscal sustainability, collaboration with the Town Council and the community in making our financial decisions. So some of the things that you'll see under the action steps, so we are trying to be very intentional around how we've identified these action steps, kind of outlining the timeline that it will take to achieve them, and then how we would intend to kind of measure or show evidence that we've achieved our goals. So the goal here with the structure is really to be able to do more frequent check-ins on our progress toward our goal, to kind of show at the end of a year, like, this is what we've achieved, and really have like some very strong qualitative and quantitative data to present that. So, and then, again, I said I wasn't going to go into each individual action step, but one of the key items that I want to pull out is, I think, the first underneath the communication goal. So it's regarding establishing and executing on a communication plan aimed to report outward to the general public. So the goal with this communication plan, you know, assuming this gets approved tonight, is we would come back, the Personnel Committee would come back kind of with that drafted communication plan. And the first thought there was to kind of have the communication plan centered around communication of progress on our goals. And so the goals are kind of the foundation for that communication plan moving forward. And you'll also see a nod there to making sure that we do check-ins frequently, so making sure that we're revisiting the goals more than just kind of at the end of the year, but keeping that consistent. And then the other item I just wanted to call out, there's probably a couple more actions under Goal Number Two. Again, kind of making sure that all of the items under Number Two are represented here as action steps because they're all important. You know, this is around supporting the strategic plan, understanding programming, making sure we keep that focus on DEI and those initiatives, attendance at our events so that we are all learning and contributing. Those things should all be represented there, and those actions are probably relatively familiar. And then the actions underneath the fiscal, the fiscal goal really are, again, focused on making financial decisions that support our strategic plan, being able to communicate evidence of that, and then also the collaboration around, you know, working with the Town Council on shared fiscal areas, and again, communication. So that's kind of the key theme. And Nicole Quinton, I don't know if there's anything else that you'd like to add in our conversations, but that's the overview.
Well?
Yeah, great job. Any questions or comments? Jen?
Yeah, I'm wondering, so I'm sure you guys have chatted about this in your meetings, but when will those check-ins happen? Would it be during our workshop meetings? And what are you guys thinking for that?
So I think the initial conversation that we had was what we would, what we intend to bring hopefully next meeting or when we can bring that communication plan forward would be kind of an outline of all of that. So we want to cover kind of the what we're communicating, how we're communicating it, where we're communicating it, when, all of that kind of planned out. So I don't think we've nailed down exactly how, what the frequency of those check-ins will be yet or where that's going to happen, but it will be part of that communication plan so that everybody's not surprised, you know, and will get kind of probably a heads up that, hey, this is going to be a conversation or at least a check-in, is what I would envision. So I think more information on that will come.
We've chatted a lot of times over the years about having our goals at our workshop meetings. I'm wondering if we could still, you know, this laminated thing that we're just seeing five minutes at the beginning of the meeting just to keep it fresh over the year? I don't know if that could still happen, but I know that would help me.
Yeah.
See why it could.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2024-2025 School Committee Goals as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Stuart, second by Jen. Any discussion? I'm going to miss you, Stuart. I would just say I think the committee did an excellent job of translating our conversation into actionable items that I really appreciate. And I'm so looking forward to a communications plan. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor? Seven zero. And with that, we are adjourned.